Welcome, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting of the Monroe County Council to order for Tuesday, June 28th, and I'd like to note for the record that Council members Crossley, Deckard, Iverson, and McKim are in person in the NatU Hill Room, and Councilmember Munson and I are attending virtually. And Councilmember Hawke is not in attendance this evening. Let's go ahead and do a roll call. So I will call Councilmember Munson.
Present.
Councilmember Crossley.
Here.
Councilmember Deckard.
Here.
Councilmember Iverson.
Here.
Councilmember McKim.
Here.
Councilmember Hawke. Okay, she's not here. We move now to the adoption of the agenda. Does anyone wish to add or remove an item from tonight's agenda? Okay, not seeing any changes. Then we will proceed with item three on department updates. So do we have any departments that wish to make an update at this time? I do not see any. As I manage all the screens here. So if that's the case, then we'll move to our first main item here. Look from the legal department, and Jeff Cockrell, as a reminder to council and the public, this item was tabled at the June 14th, 2022 regular session.
Counsel, I moved to approve the, I moved to approve Resolution 2022-18, a resolution approving tax payment compliance findings.
Second.
We had tabled this in anticipation of a meeting from the Economic Development Commission and their recommendation, which we did receive. Are there any questions or comments from council in the NatU Hill Room? And online? Okay.
Actually, you have.
Go ahead.
Okay, yeah, just one comment is that one challenge that we did have, or one of the reasons why it was a challenge getting the Economic Development Commission recommendation is that we are down one out of three Economic Development Commissioners. So the Board of Commissioners has a vacancy right now, and it's, from what I understand from the Commissioner's office, there are no applicants right now. So members of the public who are interested in serving on the Economic Development Commission and interested in requesting an appointment by the Board of Commissioners, that information is on the county website, and you can apply on the county website.
Indeed, thank you. Um, so I can't, I need to recuse myself from the vote concerning ecologic. So I think I'll defer to council. Do we want to remove that one and vote on it separately, or is it okay for me to just abstain on the entire resolution?
We've done it both ways. So if you want to do each one of them individually, we can do that, or we can do it as a whole.
Yeah, call for separation.
Second.
Okay. So we will be separating items. Do we need to vote on that, or can that just move forward?
For this type of vote, actually, any member can call for it. It doesn't need to be, need to be voted on. So now we can just
Okay.
Do it. Call for the vote on each one individually.
Okay. Okay, let's go with, let's go ahead and do that. Thanks. So the first one's bio convergence. Could we vote on that one?
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke is not present. Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Second on my list is Ecologic LLC.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke is not present. Counselor Wiltz.
Abstain.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Motion passed five zero one abstain.
Could we have the vote then for Pro Valley LLC?
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke is not present. Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero.
Thanks. And now GLC Bloomington.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke is not present. Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Motion passed six to one, six to zero.
And finally, we have Phoenix closures.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke is not present. Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero.
I just noticed that I forgot to ask for any public comments on that, so if there are any members of the public who would like to make comments, please feel free to do so. And I apologize for going out of order. Okay, I don't see anything. So let's move to American Rescue Plan Act, item number five.
Counsel, I moved to approve the Commissioner's request for the creation of count line 36705 ARPA COVID vaccine incentive in fund eight nine five zero 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 zero, American Rescue Plan Act, and simultaneously approve an additional appropriation in the amount of $600,000 in the services category.
Second.
Right. It looks like we have Ms. Purdy, the Commissioners Administrator, there to tell us a little bit about this item. Welcome.
There we go. Okay. It's kind of all the rules. Anyway, sorry. So what this is, is kind of some housekeeping, actually, for us. If you remember, last December, we, you guys, had approved a $1,000 or $500 incentive to employees for their vaccinations for the COVID-19 vaccine. The $500 was for the part-time employees. And since we wanted to really incentivize it and get that, those payments out as soon as we could, it was recognized that we could use an already, an already available line in our self-insurance fund, which is incentive and goals. And so the intention was, and what we did was, we paid for those initial reported shots out of the self-insurance fund. It was always intended that it would actually end up coming out of ARPA. And so this is just us making that recommendation, and what will happen, and I actually have to, will need to talk to the auditor because this covers two years, so December of '21 and now 2022. But what we would do normally is just do a correction of the expenses. And I did ask for a little bit more than this, what we're currently outstanding in this, because we are still offering, as per the salary ordinance, the benefit of that incentive to new employees, or even current employees who may decide to finally get it.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions from council? Counselor Iverson.
Well, good. You can see my hand. I'm glad this is working out. Ms. Purdy, you know in the, the notes for this agenda item that as of June 6th, the county has provided a total of $516,000 in vaccine incentives to its employees. But because there's two separate rates, do you know the number of employees that received a vaccine based on this incentive?
In the packet, it should have, we did attach the all the kind of the breakdown. I don't think that we counted the number of employees. I don't have that number off my head. But it's, it is multiple pages.
It is multiple pages. Okay, yeah. Because it's multiple page, I just wondered if you had that number, but that's, that's okay. I can, I'll count later.
Well, actually, I'll just get it for you tomorrow, because I know that Ms. Sensin Stein can do that for us quickly.
But it's a lot of employees that otherwise would not have been vaccinated. So this is a really, really good thing.
Yeah, I think it had a very good effect on our employees and hopefully our community.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. I don't have any further questions.
Any other questions from council? Okay, I can't see everybody, so I'm going to assume that the silence, sometimes it depends on the view. Now I can see everybody. And with no questions, then are there any? Is there any public comment? All righty then, seeing none. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous, and I'd like to make a comment. I pulled up the information out of the packet. Um, the spreadsheet that Ms. Purdy put in, and there were, we have 480 for full-time that have been back, paid the incentive and is that right? Thirty-two full-time? Does that sound about right? Or a part-time?
I don't know. It's possible.
That's what I'm trying, it's like, well, it's right here.
It, it sounds like he can get the numbers for us pretty quickly tomorrow.
Yeah.
So I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I believe it is in the packet.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
I think we're good, right? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
You too.
Sorry.
All right, now we can move to item number six from our sheriff's office.
Counsel, I'm going to be combining item 6A and B into one motion. I moved to approve the sheriff's request to create the creation of a count line 15145 Officer in Charge Supplemental in Funds 100000005 General Fund Sheriff and Fund 11700005 Public Safety Lit, and simultaneously amend the salary ordinance in these funds to add account line 15145 Office in Charge Supplemental paid at $50 per day, per person when applicable.
Second.
Okay, um, I believe we have Randy Jacobs here online with us. Welcome. Did you have anything you wanted to add before we turned up for questions? It does not look like the audio is turned on for Mr. Jacobs. Oh, now, now it is. Should be. Still not hearing him, though.
He need to be promoted or something, because I don't.
He is promoted.
Promoted.
What's his officer charge to be promoted?
I like how you did that. That was funny.
Um, okay, well, I'm I'm sorry, we're not going to be able to hear from you. It looks like, yeah, you've unmuted, but there's no audio. I'm not sure what's going on there. Um, however, this should be relatively straightforward. And was described in our packet. Are there any, are there any questions from council that somebody might be able to answer?
Well.
Yeah.
I have, uh-huh. Just wondering what the difference in pay would be for a day between the sergeant and the, the officer in charge and the lieutenant and the officer in charge? So like, how does that $50 compare to, you know, what the, the additional amount that either sergeant or lieutenant would be making? I guess there's really nobody to answer that question.
It looked like, it looked like Randy had, had it figured out there for half a second, and I'm not saying that. I don't know exactly what the issue is. Um, yes, Ms. Munson.
Perhaps Mr. Jacobs could put his comments in the chat.
That is a brilliant idea. Oh, it says I'm trying.
He's trying.
Could you repeat the question, Mr. McKim?
Yes, I'm trying to, I, what I'd like to know is how the $50, the $50 supplement compares to the additional amount that a sergeant or lieutenant working as the officer in charge would be, would be earning for that day? So it's really just a simple, I guess, a simple math problem. We can just, I was trying to look on the salary ordinance right now. Mr. Jacobs doesn't know.
It was split between the two?
If I could share my screen, please?
Absolutely. Split between the two ranks is what it says.
Okay, right here in this section, right here in the middle. You can see what a sergeant makes hourly. There we go. So I, I don't know where, we have two sergeant, we have a sergeant and a lieutenant that is on leave, but I don't know where they're at level-wise, so.
Okay, this, this gives me enough information to do that. Yeah, this is what I was looking for. So, thank you. I'm good.
Um, I had a question since we have chat communication. Hold on, I'm sorry. Um, if it's okay, I will ask a question here. Um, it's, it looked like this is coming out of two different funds. The, um, let's see, the PS Lit, I believe, yes, the PS Lit Fund and then the General Fund. Is that just going to be taken like every other time? How is the, or is that divided?
I think we have, just so, depending on where the the officer in charge is located that will be taking over, is my understanding, is that what you got it in both the general as well as there, and it's just there when needed.
I see. Okay, thanks. Um, are there any other questions from council? Uh, yes, Mr. Deckard.
Thank you. Your eyes are great. You saw that, Madam President. You're doing a great job. Keep it up, so I don't have to run the meeting. That's awesome. My question, my question, and this may be something Captain Jacobs that you want to get back with me later, and that's fine, too. My curiosity is, how do you determine the, the officer that steps in like this? Is it merit or seniority or rank? I'd be curious how, how you all go about doing it, or shift. I know that shift probably is another decider. I'd just be curious on that. And feel free to get back to me later if it's easier, because I don't want you to have to chat or type for three days, whatever works.
Seniority.
And we could definitely follow up on that, because again, I recognize, senior officer on that shift. Oh, okay. All right, thank you very much.
Okay, are there any other questions? Not seeing any from council. Is there any public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, then could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you, and thanks for everyone's patience with the technology here. This is always fun, always fun. All right, we will be moving to item number seven on our agenda now.
Counsel, I moved to approve the Health Department's request for additional appropriations and fund 81049623 Public Health Emergency Preparedness in the amount of $10,500 in the personnel category, $1,600 in the supplies category, and $12,900 in the services category, for a total of $25,000.
Second.
Okay, and Ms. Cottle from the Health Department is there in the room, I believe.
I am, thank you.
Hi.
This is a routine grant that we have every year for public health preparedness. You all will remember way back when, when it first came to us, it was bioterrorism, right? So we've come a long way in changing names. We will get these funds again. The grant cycle is July through June. We have been told the, the funds are coming. We have our initial deliverables for that. But as you know, we've been working on our after-action report after COVID and our improvement plans from that. And the state is going to take our improvement plans and put those into the deliverables for the grant. So we won't actually get the grant award until they've been able to put those in it. But we do want to make sure those funds are available for us to use, and we do have a part-time person in this fund. So we're just requesting appropriation.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions from council members in the room there? Or online? I do not see any hands raised. All right, do we have any public comment? Seeing none. Let's have a roll call vote on that, please.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Now we have item B.
Counsel, I moved to approve the Health Department's request for a category transfer in fund 81819622 IMM Long-Term COVID Fund of $16,744 from the Supplies category to the Services category.
Second.
And Ms. Cottle, do you have a synopsis for us, for us?
For sure. This is housekeeping. This, again, is immunization grant funds for COVID-19. It primarily is kind of a pass-through to our public health clinic. And as we are winding down that grant cycle as well, we thought that we had, we just had some difficulty making some purchases, and so we just want to do transfers so that we can utilize all of those grant funds to the best of our ability.
Okay, are there any questions from council? Yes, Mr. Iverson.
I think this is as good a time as any to ask, where can people get their vaccines, especially the little ones that were just approved?
Yes, so locally, they can call their provider, providers will have it. But we do have vaccine or will have at the public health clinic, so you can call, you're going to test me here, 812-353-3244, and schedule an appointment for that. And that way, if, depending on your age group, if they're waiting on some vaccine to come in, then they can schedule that when it's an appropriate time for you. We are still working on the map, on that state map, on getting us back on there. I checked that earlier today and just sent an email about when can we expect to have that backed up?
There's a lot of eagerness to get those shots in the littlest ones, so that's good to hear. Thank you.
Yes, thanks. Any other questions from council? I see no other questions. So is there a public comment on this topic? None there as well, so if we could, since this is a category transfer, I believe we can do a voice vote.
No, not hybrid.
Oh, right, because of my vacation, which thank you very much for your patience on that issue. So could we please have a roll call vote?
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you. And now we have an annual report to hear about from you.
Yes, so Andrew, are you able to pull up the annual, oh, perfect. Yes, so Andrew, are you able to pull up the annual, oh, perfect, thank you, and I will try to guide you through the pages. So everyone should have gotten the link to our annual report, and I will try to go through this really quickly, but I do want to hit some highlights. So we start on, you turn the page, the first page is our vision and our mission and our values. Councilperson Wiltz will definitely recognize this, as she was part of the team when we developed these, that helped us do that. So you can see, we tried to have some highlights throughout our annual report, things that we did throughout the year that are significant. And then if you turn then to page two, it really just talks about, there's a foreword, and it talks about our fees. You know, the health fund is kind of split between taxes and our fees for service. So it's not quite 50/50, but it is pretty close to that. And then it talks a little bit about the Health Board and has our organizational chart, which already needs to be updated. So that, that is one of those living documents, right? So on page four, the next page talks about really the 10 essential services of public health. And that is what framework local health departments work under. So we're really looking at assessment, policy, and assurance. So under assessment, we're monitoring, we're investigating, diagnosing, we're doing those kinds of activities. Under policy, where there is a lot of activity, it comes down to communication and education, and those activities we're involved in, mobilizing partners. So think about COVID and all the different mobilizations, and you've got a picture there from our Friday press conferences that we did, a great collaboration, how we're implementing policies and utilizing authority from regulations when we need to do that. And then the assurances are enabling and empower individuals, building a competent workforce, which we continue to try to do. Our staff, as you'll see, do lots of trainings, try to keep everybody up to date, and we thank you for some of the changes that we had this past year with some or two, with some additional staff, and improve quality of our work and infrastructure. And the next page, we did staff training even during the pandemic. Things changed on what that looked like, but we were still doing that. And then I really just want to hit some of the areas that we work in, because people, so page seven next. So people sometimes don't realize what we do. They, they know us by what they've came to us for, right? So if they need a birth certificate, they know we do that. If they need to install a septic system, they know we do that. They know maybe that we do immunizations, but they really don't have the breadth of what we do locally. And not every health department does exactly the same thing. So we have our disease intervention specialists. We now have three, and those are grant-funded, and then we have a part-time person as well. And that grant actually covers a 12-county jurisdiction, so you've heard us talk about that a lot. This talks about the outreach that we do with HIV testing, hepatitis C testing, syphilis testing. You know, syphilis still exists, there are outbreaks of syphilis during the pandemic. The southern Indiana had a huge outbreak of syphilis, and that made its way up here as well. So we're dealing with those things every day, and then doing these, whatever the outbreak is, there's always something on top of that. So do take a look at what they do. On page 10, it starts our futures clinic, so remember, that's our Title X Family Planning Clinic. You can see the people that we serve. We finally, we have a part-time position open currently, but we recently hired the LPN, so we're thrilled about that. Over half of our clients fell at or below 150% of the poverty level. And only 3.4% of our clients are under 18. So you, you can come with any income, it does not matter. You simply are charged based on a sliding scale on terms of what your income is. And then if you skip over to page 14 and 15, this is our Population Health and Outreach Division. And on page 14, you can kind of see, we, again, in the midst of this, we were still doing our community health assessment. We were still doing harm reduction, the lock zone training. We were working with our Medical Reserve Corps, all of the clinics. So this is really our outreach division. They work on accreditation. Remember, we still have plans to become an accredited health department. That is now in our strategic plan. So in the next few years, we hope to be able to hit that button and, and do that as well. We had COVID hotline, COVID complaint line, we followed up on COVID complaints. Lots of information on those pages. And then, when you get to page 18, I really want to stop there for a minute, because this is our Medical Reserve Corps. And I want you to focus on the value, the economic value there. We had over 500 volunteers who gave over 4,600 hours. So had we had to hire those people, so you know, you think about it, we would have either had to hire those extra people or we would not have been doing those vaccination clinics. So huge, they helped at Assembly Hall. They helped at, mostly at the Convention Center, but they helped in a variety of ways, and the economic value was almost $140,000. So that's a huge savings to the county. And then our public health clinic, of course, we contract with IU Health for public health services. We give lots of vaccinations, not just COVID vaccines, so all of your childhood immunizations, your adult immunizations. We gave almost 800 COVID vaccines in our schools in the county. We did over 20,000 vaccines last year. We had over 32 flu outreaches. And so there's a lot of information there for you as well, and that, there's several graphs for you. We had our general environmental health. They deal with illegal drug labs, so meth labs that are found home so that those need to be cleaned up before they're habitable again. Mosquitoes, radon, PCBs, we had three sites that were removed from the National Priority List this year. Food protection, again, an area that we had to pivot. We had flooding last year. We had to work with restaurants who experienced flooding. Our wastewater sanitation, and I've jumped up to page 31, Andrews. It, over 300 septic permit applications were received. We started Open Gov in 2021. So lots of things going on there. And then, when you get to page 35 through 38, it's our public health preparedness division, section. So a lot on the COVID response. The testing site we had, the vaccination clinics, we had the school shot clinics that we had, all of that, the PPE that we delivered. All of those kinds of things are listed there. So I encourage you to take a look at that. The last pieces that are there on page 40 is vital records. So we still issue a lot of birth certificates. We did, over 4,800 birth certificates were issued last year, and again, lots of death certificates, unfortunately more than usual. So, social media, we had a good reach. We had over 200,000 people reached with our Facebook last year. So I encourage you to take a moment, take some time and look at that. Lots of good information in there. And then, along with that, of course, we've been working on our Community Health Assessment and preparing for our Community Health Improvement Plan, and that's what Kathy is going to go over. We have a kickoff for that next week. Hoping to get lots of people involved in how we can be strategic and address those health priorities that the community has set. So I'll let Kathy come up and talk to you about that, unless you have questions about the annual report.
Are there any questions? Hi Kathy, and welcome.
Hi, welcome. Thank you, Commissioner, to our council members for allowing me. Thank you, council members, for letting me come and tell you about our Community Health Assessment and our Community Health Improvement Plan. Andrew, can you blow up the slides, please?
We see them.
Hey, I'm Kathy Hewitt, and I'm from Monroe County Health Department. I'm the Population Health and Outreach Manager. So I'm here today to provide you with an overview of the recent Community Health Assessment and the top priorities that came from that process. We will also explain today how the community will work together in action teams to co-create the 2022 Community Health Improvement Plan, or CHIP. And finally, we hope to encourage those of you with an interest in making a difference in the health of the community to join an action team during the upcoming CHIP kickoff extravaganza on July 14th. The Monroe County Health Department and the Monroe County Health Assessment has been a collaborative effort between the Monroe County Health Department, the City of Bloomington Parks and Recreation, IU Health, Bloomington Hospital, Community Voices for Health in Monroe County, and Health Net. Next slide, please. Hey, a community health assessment is a systematic process that involves the community to identify, analyze, and prioritize issues that affect community health. Over the last couple of years, the Partners for the Community Health Assessment have gathered health data and perspectives from hundreds of community members to better understand local health conditions and priority issues. This assessment will serve as a guiding document for the Community Health Improvement Plan that we will soon start developing. Next slide. The Community Health Assessment has involved a significant amount of planning and coordination between the partners. It also included a community survey that was made available online through email and through social media, and as well as the mass COVID vaccines clinics that were held by the Monroe County Health Department and IU Health Community Hospital. We also hosted many focus groups and deliberative discussions to gain a better understanding of the health issues involving the community. In addition, we collected community health data from various government and nonprofit sources to increase our understanding of how conditions in Monroe County compare to other communities, the state, and the nation. We analyzed health data and residents' input and determined 10 priority health issues affecting Monroe County. We held think tank meetings in April and May to share the Community Health Assessment information and data about the 10 priorities. And after discussion about each topic, attendees voted to select the top 10 priorities, or the top priorities to focus on for the Community Health Improvement Plan, or CHIP. Next slide, please. Throughout the process, we tried to create opportunities to hear from a broad range of voices, particularly unrepresentative groups, and support their attendance at the community events. For example, we scheduled events on different days and locations to meet different needs, offered transportation and childcare, and arranged for Spanish-speaking facilitators and an ASL interpreter. We listened very carefully to community perspectives and stories to make sure that we were accurately conveying those perspectives. And we trained community members to serve as facilitators and note-takers so they were able to help with future community conversations. As we mentioned earlier, our team identified 10 priority health issues that emerged from our research and conversations with the community members. And during the think tank discussions in April and May, community members cast their votes for the issues that they thought were the most important to address and narrow their priorities a bit further. They also discussed ideas that would help Monroe County move forward with change. Next slide. The three priority issues that rose to the top during the think tank voting, substance use and mental health, poverty and navigating health and social services, inequity, discrimination, and bias. Another topic, affordable housing and homelessness and housing insecurity was also a top priority. This issue is being addressed by the United Way of Monroe County, the Community Foundation of Bloomington, and Monroe County's Heading Home Initiative. Next slide, please. The next step in the process will be the development of the Monroe County Community Health Improvement Plan, or CHIP. And a CHIP group will be formed for each of the three priority areas. Team members will work together to review recommendations from community members from the Community Health Assessment. And they will also work together to brainstorm and co-create goals and strategies from the ground up, designed to move our community forward with change. The kickoff for the CHIP action teams will be on Thursday, July 14th, from 12 to 1:00. It will be held in the Fountain Square Ballroom with a half hour for networking following. Participants will be asked to attend regular meetings as scheduled by the individual CHIP teams, with the thought of having a larger team meeting with all three CHIP groups at, at least three or four times a year. In the past, the regular CHIP groups have been scheduled on a monthly basis. So we're looking forward to seeing everybody at the upcoming CHIP kickoff. But if you aren't able to attend in person, you can sign up for the CHIP groups or communications online on the Monroe County Health Department webpage that's on the Monroe County Government at www.co.munro.in.us. Thank you.
Thank you. Very informative. Are there any questions or comments from council? Yes, Mr. Deckard.
She always sees me, I'm always happy. My question is, I should know this, I'm sorry I don't. What is the total, or what's the estimated timeline on this next phase with this, the CHIP working group? Like, how long does that process go on and reach its, its completion or implementation, I guess, was the best.
Generally, the CHIP process is between two and year, two and three years, with the last year starting to work on the next assessment, trying to start gathering data for the next round. So we have done the assessment, we work with the hospital, we team together. So we generally do this process every three years. And this will actually be our third time that we've gone through this with this, so.
Is it getting easier?
We know the process a lot better, yeah.
Any other questions or comments from council members? Yes, Mr. Iverson?
There was panning while I was raising my hand. I'm glad you saw that. Just, I guess it's more of a comment than a question, but for those of you watching, this is a lot of information. And if you go to the Health Department's website, they have these like little blocks of information, quick links, I guess, is that what you call them? And, and it's really helpful to navigate all of this information, because there's a lot of technical information here, there's a lot of, like, easy-to-understand information, too. So it's really helpful to go to the Health Department's website and kind of navigate some of this yourself. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Yeah, it's a great resource. And again, if you can't come to the meeting, you can sign up there. We're happy to send you all the information, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Seeing none. I just want to thank you for being here, and I'm looking forward to the July 14th kickoff. And best of luck.
We hope to see you all, thanks.
Okay, we are moving right along, and our next agenda item is the American Rescue Plan Act Projects Update, and we have Commissioner Thomas here to help facilitate this discussion slash presentation.
Hi, everyone. I'm just sharing my screen here. So I wanted to just start off with some questions to think about. And I've posed these same questions at the end, but it's just something to bear in mind as we move forward. We are, our understanding from Mr. Cockrell in legal is that endowments are not going to be possible. So the question for some of these things where we've identified endowments as a possibility is to think about maybe a two-year program or 18-month program of a particular fund or something. But we're going to have to think through that part of it, for sure. So thinking about, are there other projects to add? What are our next steps, and how are we going to involve the public, and what our timetable is? Because some of these projects don't have very much information right now, but I'm happy to hear from folks who are here. hear from folks who are here that have information on some of these. But also, some of these are pretty much as detailed as we're going to get at this moment as well. So we have this range of, you know, full estimates of work to be done, things that are in progress and things that we're waiting on. So the first project here is the airport project. And Mr. Laverty did give us some sense of one project being a priority over the other, if it comes down to that. And if anybody wants to just shout out questions, I guess that's probably a good way to do it at this point because there's 23 projects. So this one is one I've been working on. I have a really detailed proposal for anybody who wants that information. But the Monroe County Fire Protection District is looking at adding a reserve ambulance service. And in a nutshell, it's a $1.2 million project, which will cover, they're basically planning to cover the four quadrants around the city. But in 2021, between on-call services from other counties and meeting ambulances serving us from other counties and also utilizing what was, well, what will be until June 30th of this year, the Ellisville Reserve, that's about two calls a day that we're not currently covering with the IU ambulance service. So, you know, waiting on an ambulance from out of county is a very scary prospect. I was, at one point, as I got interested, as I was listening to the scanner, and there was somebody waiting for an ambulance from Green County, and they were saying, oh, the patient's having a hard time breathing. And I'm thinking, boy, they must think this is taking hours. This must feel like days. So there is a high end of buying brand-new ambulances, which is way more expensive. They came up with a great option here, which is to use a sort of a truck chassis that's new and then adding an old box, a used box top to it. These are easier to maintain as well. But with hardware, soft goods, hard costs, and then the ambulances themselves, times four, is that total there?
Ask a question on this. So we received some information about new economic development dollars that surround maybe providing medical, these cores in communities, and could we use those dollars to leverage this? I don't know about the timing of that. And I unfortunately don't have much more information that, as I'm pulling this off the top of my head. So.
Is this something that you talked about this weekend?
Yeah, it sure was.
Yeah, I've not heard of this at all.
All right, well, let me look it up and I'll give you some information.
Yeah, that would be great. I think there are a few of these where I've identified, maybe there are some other funding sources. So I think if we can do that, that would be great because that means we can do some other projects.
That's right.
Awesome. Yeah. Oh, if you could find out, that'd be great.
All right.
Thank you. So on childcare, we did receive a quote of $300,000 from New Hope to complete their commercial kitchen. And then we have the estimated IV tech costs, and then here's an endowment, red flag. So we're going to have to think through that as well. And of course, we already approved the pre-K for the summer for $43,000. Did you have anything to add, Councilor Monson?
You're on mute, Cheryl.
Thank you for that summary, Commissioner Thomas. We'll just anxiously await news about endowment possibility.
Next, we have the Convention Center, which has three priority lists. The first priority list totals over $1 million. The second, the third priority is $1.6 million, $7,500 for the second priority. These were quoted in the fall of 2021, so I'm guessing the prices are probably higher at this point as well. I should have put that in the notes. We had a great discussion, Councilors Crossley, Iverson, and myself, about diversity, equity, inclusion, trying to find a way to help startups, minority, and LGBTQ+ businesses in the community, and also helping those that are already established to continue to thrive in our community. And we have a $1 million suggested funding. And here we go with an endowment again, right? Another piece here. So this is, you know, again, this might become a short-term project that maybe we could work through. So Commissioner Jones isn't here, but Councilor Monson, do you have information on the elder services?
I do have an amount that we hope for, and this is to establish a senior center at Enright East that is a permanent home for elder services managed by Area 10 Agency on Aging, and it too involves an endowment. So we'll wait to see what comes from this.
Okay.
Ask a question.
Please.
Councilmember Monson, what was the dollar amount of that endowment?
Sorry, I sent it off. I thought it would be on here. It's $500,000 for a facility and adaptation for mobility and for parking.
Thank you.
Yeah, I did not receive anything. I'm sorry. I checked through my email at about 3 o'clock this afternoon, so. And so that would be to purchase an actual space? Is that?
That is to purchase, yes.
Okay, great. I will add that. What I'm going to do is migrate this slide deck to the Dropbox so that we can just, since.
And I just put the dollar amount in the Dropbox file, so it was a little placeholder.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Habitat for Humanity is trying to finish out their Osage Place project. They have two phases for infrastructure. They need $1.7 million to complete those two. And again, I received this information, I think, in December, so this is probably higher as well. So for the Health Department, we have first a request for a permanent space, storage drive, and a place to do drive-through vaccination clinics in the future. I have a note on there that we may want to wait on our space needs assessment once we determine what's going on with criminal justice reform. But there seemed to be a lot of interest here to proceed with a COVID wastewater monitoring for two locations. So for a total of $91,000 for two years. Highway Department has a number of dual projects with Stormwater, so doing paving and drainage at the same time. And there are six subdivisions that are listed. The total for all the subdivisions, because there seemed to be more interest in that from folks, is 1.2 million. And then we have three ongoing stormwater projects that need to be completed, and they have a much higher price tag, up to over $3 million a piece, so. With rural housing renovations, repairs, we talked about finding a way to help homeowners who are facing necessary repairs but are struggling to pay for them. And here we have endowment land, but maybe we could use our trustees on a short-term basis to help fund some needed repairs, things like roof replacements and plumbing work and things like that. We're not talking about building an outdoor deck. We're talking about necessary repairs here and creating some sort of a grant system for that. We don't have anything more specific at this time. I think if we could put some money into a fund, we could make the decisions from there.
And I have a clarifying question. And if there's money in the fund, it doesn't become an endowment issue?
I think we would have to do a short-term fund. We would have to have an offer of a specific number of months. And then, yeah, that's.
Sorry to interrupt, Commissioner Thomas, but I did want to remind our council and the commissioners that the recent guidance that we've received from the State Board of Accounts is that we can't use ARPA for endowments.
Right.
And we have to expend the money by 2026?
So that still gives us time to put together funds, see how they go, give them a year or two, and then what's left, we have earmarked maybe for something else, so.
And I'll just say that, you know, a lot of these discussions came up because of the AIC conferences this weekend. And one of the pieces of advice that we were given was particularly for some of these longer-term projects, don't be too quick to spend the money because the rules might change in our favor and that the rules are constantly changing. And so that we shouldn't necessarily assume that because we can't do an endowment today that we might not be able to in a year. If it's long-term, don't spend it too quickly.
That's interesting, but that also plays well with doing something short-term. And if it works out and they do change the rules, we could make that something longer-term or do a revolving, in the case of the home renovations, a revolving loan account as well for more moderate income, folks. Hoosier Hills Food Bank needs $30,000. Pretty simple, just to finish paying off buying a full-size storage trailer. We were at the food bank for Fresh Friday Distribution again, and they planned on, I think, 500 families, but we served 800. So the need is there, and it's pretty high.
Can I make a point real quick here? Councilmember Wiltz put in a column for additional funding and leverage dollars, and it's wonderful to see the leverage dollars here that the ARP funds just make these dollars go so much further.
Yeah, absolutely. No, it's a great point.
That's really good to see.
Yeah. We had a meeting yesterday with local internet providers, and I forwarded you all, the who couldn't attend the recording of the meeting. It was really a good initial meeting. We talked about some potential projects. Smithville is going to help us by providing a map, and that's going to help us understand where service will be coming in the future. They have a lot of projects that are going through 2024, so we could help, you know, people get a sense of what their options are or what potential service they could have. And one of the things I talked about as well, and I don't know if there's a lot of interest here, but they have this at the park in Ellisville, but putting Wi-Fi hotspots at outdoor locations like fire stations and schools to make sure that folks can access something nearby if their service is out or if they don't have service. But we had a really good initial discussion, I thought, and Jeff, did you want to add anything else to that?
I don't think so. It was an excellent discussion. I think the maps that we're going to get will help us kind of visualize better where we're not going to have fiber.
Yeah.
Because we do have several companies that are planning to build out their entire territory by 2024.
Right. And for those folks who are really out there, Jeff mentioned Starlink. You know, there's a satellite internet system. It's apparently good. I haven't heard much, but he knows somebody that has had good success with it. But that initial startup cost is pretty high. The monthly expense is not outrageous, but the initial startup cost is high, so we could potentially maybe help folks get that initial equipment installed to start their internet service. I don't know who wants to talk about this one. The mental health substance use disorder, these are the items that were listed on the spreadsheet, and I haven't seen anything added. And I've made a note here that some of these projects could be funded by opioid litigation settlement dollars.
Yeah, and I have, you know, there has been a lot of development in some of these areas, particularly mobile crisis response. And that I asked Linda Grove Paul to give kind of a briefing to the Justice Reform Committee. Those of you who are on that, has that been scheduled?
It had to be rescheduled, so hopefully in the next meeting we'll be able to have it, since we weren't able to have it the last time or last week.
But those calendar invites just came out today.
Sounds great.
Well, and especially too, now that 988 is going to be up and running.
Well, that's, yeah, that's what a lot of this is kind of framed as, you know, you've got 988, but then also where do people go? We have the Stride Center. How do you connect the services? You have the mobile response teams, and there have been a lot of really exciting.
Yeah, there have been, and it'll be interesting to see, for example, if there's anything we can do to supplement or help the Stride Center in any way, if there's anything we can add to that, if there's some capital project that's needed. So I think there's some good opportunities there. People's Market Cooperative is seeking help with holding their outdoor market space. And what they need are barricades for safety. I got an initial quote of about $50,000. That's an approximate. Ms. Ridge got that info for me. These are just the standard water barricades. And retention pond refurbishment. Commissioner Jones does not have more information at this time, but she's working with Ms. Latonia at Stormwater to work through this. One of the key things that we're looking to do is if we do have to help a development or a homeowners association with retention pond refurbishment or reengineering, which helps every resident, right? We want to make sure that they have something in place so that that maintenance will be continued, that we're not just bailing them out once and then having to deal with the same problems again. Councilwoman Wilson, I haven't met on septic assistance, but we do have a program currently from the Lake Monroe Watershed Study. They had grant funds to help with septic replacement assistance, and they ran through the funds very quickly. So they gave us a recommendation that we use census blockers, zip codes. But again, this may be something we could work through with our township trustees because they do such a phenomenal job in helping us to allocate dollars to folks who are in need. They really, they have the structure in place, and they're really good at it. So this may be something we could do. We don't have an estimate yet. And it could be repair, but it could be replacement. But we're talking about $15,000 right now to do that, to put in a new septic system. And again, it impacts everybody. We haven't had any further developments on transit. These are the notes from the last time. So we probably need to meet again, but to talk to rural transit as well to get some other ideas. So that's next on our agenda. Solar projects, so MPI, we contracted with them to give us an estimate on project costs, give us some idea of projects, potential projects. And we do not have that contract solidified yet. They did the work, but they're not going to give us the exact numbers and the information until we pay them, which I totally understand. But in a nutshell, we're addressing just about every building in the county. We're looking at ways to really reduce our electricity cost. And I'm going to reach out to Hoosier Energy about the airport as well and work with Carlos Laverty and Hoosier Energy, and let's see what we can work out and see what we can do to save money out there as well.
I would love to see that project move forward. That's, in particular, the rooftop solar on all county buildings.
Yep.
This roof can take it. We should have solar panels.
Yeah.
But it's also the charging stations, too.
Yes, absolutely. So we're moving our fleet. Our next evolution, our next generation of fleet is going to move toward gas, electric, or just electric. And so, for example, at the showers building parking lot, we're looking at doing a whole array on overheads, but we're also looking at doing that at the highway garage and making them very tall for the dump trucks. So this not only helps the longevity of our dump trucks to be covered, because right now they're not, but there also is a place for them to plug in, which they need to do in the winter. So, yeah, a lot of exciting things, a lot of potential projects. The estimate right now we have is 3 million for everything. That's ballpark, so. I don't have any information on this yet, and I didn't know if this is something where you all have made some strides or you have other information you can provide on this?
I think we've got some follow-up work to do. Yeah.
Yeah. Well, and one of the issues we have is we set aside endowment money there, too. Yeah.
Which, yeah, creates a secondary.
Yep, it does.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, and I think we might be about to make the same point, but I feel like. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, and I think we might be about to make the same point, but I feel like when we were at our conference this past week, there was some type of, something with spending with the money. I think that's where I'm going with that.
Well, actually, actually, what I, what I was going to raise is, is I was trying to figure out to what degree this overlaps with the five hundred thousand dollars that we pledged for the ISHI for the Beacon Initiative.
And I think that's where, yeah, yeah, that's where.
Okay. Yeah, and I don't know that. So if that's, if this is the same, then that's great.
Okay.
So, but it might not be, and I didn't want to take it off not knowing.
Okay. Maybe, maybe we can hold that until we get that a little bit more confirmed in. The endowment issue would not affect that five hundred thousand dollar pledge, right?
No.
That wasn't for an endowment. That was to support this.
That was just a straight pledge for construction and, yeah, capital.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. And Corey in the Uplands, nothing yet. I'm going to convene our community group. We're going to see what bond funding is left, look at those phased projects that were outlined. Initially, when we did our ROI grant application, we might do another ROI grant application as well. So again, this is ways to stretch to the dollars as Counselor Iverson said. And we have not yet met to talk about the social service grants, but the idea was to create sort of a an additional round of funding, almost like the Sofia Travis, but specifically focused on COVID recovery. And, and we have not talked about a dollar amount yet, so we'll talk.
Yes.
And one of the, the, one of the things that's been fresh on my mind, given the Supreme Court's ruling last Thursday, I think a lot of local officials are thinking about how they are supportive of the, their constituents, members of the community that now are figuring out a million things and are not for province that are figuring out that with them. And so I think that can factor in some of our.
Great, great point. Yeah. And Counselor Everson placed a sharps disposal box initiative on here for, we're estimating about five thousand dollars each, right?
And so these are multiple gallon sizes. These aren't the sharps containers you find in the restrooms. These are large containers and the, this is not my idea. So I'm not going to take credit for it, but the idea is that these would be large containers that we place in every single township trustee's office that they could wheel around to areas that they deemed where there were sharps being disposed on the ground or in other areas that are not desirable for our community.
And this again could be an opioid funding.
Yes, it could.
And I've, I've thrown this on here because I've had discussions with building department and planning. I still need to talk to health department about this, but migrating data is not cheap, but it really will help our infrastructure of open gov ticketing systems to be able to not have to go back to paper files or to use a old database that is no longer supported by software developers that are on their last legs and we're scared every day. So, so we're asking for quotes on, on all of those. We have a partial that we've done for building, but it's only some of the information from some of the years, but we'd like to go back to ninety seven. I think we should get the septic permits done as well. I think planning is going to be much harder because the notes are much more extensive and complex, and that may be something where we actually have to hire somebody. And it's not just a matter of checking boxes and putting stuff in a system. So. But if we can get the septic permits done as well, I think that's going to help us identify those folks who need a new system and give us a sense of how old a lot of the systems are. So, so back to the questions.
So, so I, I do have one that I would like to, I'd like to consider adding as well, and that is, and I know I mentioned this to, to some of you before, but this is adding a kind of support for the Economic Vitality Project. That's the, the Community Economic Development Planning Effort. It's used to be called SED's equivalent, which was a super bureaucratic term that would attract absolutely nobody. But my, my proposal would be to support the effort to the amount of twenty five thousand dollars, ten thousand of which from ARPA and fifteen thousand of which from the Economic Development Fund, which many of you probably didn't even know we have, but basically holds tax abatement fees. And there's, there's just shy of fifteen thousand dollars. There's a fourteen something in there. So, you know, make up the difference from anything, but essentially twenty five split between those two.
Is this the BBC?
They are facilitating the process.
Okay.
But it's really meant to be a community economic development process. And one of the, the goals is to bring in parts of the community that don't normally think of economic development as applying to them. You know, that's, that's, there's going to be a lot of effort in that regard. But I think, you know, just ten thousand dollars from ARPA combined with this fifteen thousand dollars that's sitting there doing absolutely nothing from tax abatement fees would be, I think, something we'd want to consider.
We can put tax abatement fees to work. Let's do it. Absolutely.
Yeah, I didn't even know until recently we had, was sitting there either.
Yeah.
I would say, I know what we see is listed as far as next steps. First of all, I'd like to say I'm excited to see all the projects that we have. And especially with the People's Market and our DEI involvement. I know that that could benefit greatly here in our county. But I do like the idea and I would highly encourage us as a collective body with commissioners and our council as well as opening it to the public, it would create a healthy dialogue as well as it just makes community feel like they are involved in the money that is getting invested, that we are really trying to invest. And maybe when we have this type of discussion, if there's things that, you know, all, all of our brilliant brains have thought of and something that we might not have thought of that, you know, maybe should have been something that we thought of. Would just really like, and I, I think it's a great idea and vital for transparency. And just an open dialogue, because as we learned in a lot of different conversations that we've had, our community really wants to be involved. Of course, in community, sometimes we can have a lot of voices. But at least we can have it open and people know that they can come to us. And we can have that facilitated dialogue as well. So I'm looking forward to doing all of these projects and, and maybe adding more as well, but I really would love to have a facilitated joint effort between the two groups as well.
Yeah, I, I spoke with TSE about doing a survey where, you know, the, the respondent gets a hundred dollars and they can, you know, allocate it to whatever projects they want, however many dollars they want, so they could, you know, fund something heavily, fund something a little. And we can use that to help guide our decision making. And having a joint meeting is the other idea that we had. So, you know, the question is, again, we do have some projects that are pretty solid in terms of we know exactly what they're going to cost and what they require. Do we move forward with any of that? Or do we just wait and do a public response session, do the survey for a few weeks, really? Get a press release out there, get it out on social media and encourage people to, to, to join in. And we would have an allocation as well. I think that would be, you know, what other projects can you think of? And just so people can enter that information as well. And that would give two different opportunities, one web and one in person or via Zoom. So, so that's the, the question is, what do we want to do? And, and timetable wise, do we want to get more information on some of these things before we do the survey and the meeting? Or do we want to move forward with just ideas for now with the survey and the meeting? And then, and as we're doing that, keep working on solidifying information? How do we want to do this? What is our overall timetable?
I mean, I, I do think that, that, I think you've articulated one of the challenges, though, that some of these are very well defined and some of them are not. And particularly with these endowments, maybe much more to the future, but some of them, like one, you know, I know we, we talked about this the other day, the convention center, I would really, you know, some of those expenses are very well defined and they're pretty, some of them are somewhat urgent, you know, involving the windows and they have a fairly long lead time. And, you know, I would certainly like for, and for that, for some of those expenses that are very well defined for us to move forward on. We've already done that with a couple of, of examples already. I know, I mean, we voted on a couple of, of ARPA expenditures already that were, that were quite well defined. You know, I would love for us to go forward with at least, you know, the priority one or even a large part of the priority one expenditures, we can, you know, the, the priority two and three, we can, we could leave till later, for example. But I, you know, I, it seems like that there, there was some degree of consensus that supporting, basically it's maintaining our assets. You know, it's not, it's not expanding capabilities or doing anything flashy. It's real unexciting and unflashy basic maintenance things that we need to do to our building.
I, I saw Cheryl had her hand up, I think. But she's muted.
Counselor, Counselor McKim covered this. I was going to say priority one items include some that are truly urgent. And, for example, a fire panel and the overall building windows with winter coming up. So I hope that we can be considering these in the near future.
So it, on this list are ten, but she, she has noted that there are forty four windows that have issues, but only ten are listed here. Those are the most, the highest priority for seventy five thousand. And then the fire panel upgrade for under twenty, just under twenty thousand. So that's something to think about.
Is there maybe a, a way we could look at, are there time sensitive projects that we want to pull out? And, and then proceed with the rest of, of them as, you know, getting the input publicly, online and in person?
Yeah, I think one of the concerns that my colleagues and I have is just if we start piecemealing things that we're going to lose that public input. We're going to lose people having a sense that, that their voice matters in this process. And so, for example, one of the things that we found out is that with the solar project is that if we move very quickly on some things, we could get a better deal on the net metering with Duke. But again, you know, do you just pull that out and say, well, we'll, we'll do better if we do it now? Or do you wait and you have that public session and that web survey of some sort?
Is that something that wouldn't be happening if we didn't have ARPA funding for it?
No, no, because it's, it's because we're installing solar that we need to get, I think that's your question. It's because we're installing solar that we need to get signed on with Duke as soon as possible to get a better deal on excess electricity collected.
And my understanding is that metering sunsets in two days, right? That July first of twenty twenty two, net metering, so like if I wanted to put solar panels on my house.
Yeah. Yeah.
Net metering would not be an option for me because the residential rate that I'm getting, and I, we are getting way in the weeds on solar here, so I want to be careful.
MPI, no, MPI indicated that there's a possibility to get some good, better deals, but it has to be before the end of the year and.
End of the calendar year?
Yes.
Okay.
So, but I don't know. I mean, it's all, it's still up in the air and, and we don't have their exact quote yet either.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I guess I'm still just, I mean, I, you know, I think that's great if we want to have additional public listening sessions and or surveys. I just, I don't think that everything we're talking about is directly comparable. You know, are, are you, for example, the mental health initiatives, are you in favor of mental health versus a carpet replacement in the convention? Well, yeah, of course, mental health is going to win out on that kind of generic, but, but we still have, you know, some kind of nuts and bolts things that we have to do that aren't directly comparable with everything else on the list. So I, you know, we, we have already made a number of ARPA allocations based on needs that have been fleshed out thoroughly. I mean, Commissioner Githens had a couple of projects that were very thoroughly fleshed out. And we supported them. And I, I kind of feel like this is one that's been fleshed out and has a fairly long lead time on several of the options. I, I just would really like to see it move forward and not wait for many more months to even, even consider. And there may be others too. I'm just, this is just one that I've kind of logged in on.
It would have to go before commissioners and councils. So I don't know if we have enough lead time to even to get it on the agenda for, for July's meeting. I don't know. I'm not very good with the calendar on that stuff, but.
Would it need to be go before the commissioners first?
Yes. Well, not necessarily first, but we could, we need every week, so that's not going to be an issue.
Because it's already on the plan, right? I believe convention center, is it, it's already in the ARPA plan, is it?
No, we're, we're going to be specifying everything out on our, on our plan. I think that's the best way to do it.
I mean, the appropriation request is the long pole.
Yeah, that's the, that's the longest thing. That's, I guess that's why I was focusing on that. So are you asking to do a hundred thousand of this now to do the panel, the fire panel and the windows? And then we hold the rest? Or you, are you suggesting the one million sixty thousand? But which, which are you proposing? Just so I have clarity.
Well, I mean, I guess I'm proposing the, all of the priority one, but I mean, but, but that's, there's, it's legitimate to try, see if it could be broken up. I mean, maybe there's a priority one A and priority one B that, I mean, we could, we could always ask the, the convention center in that case, you know, which are the items that really do have a long ordering period and, you know, would be much, it would be the most important to get kind of in the queue right now. I mean, that's something that could be asked. And then hold off on the rest, but.
Were, were you asking the deadline for asking for an additional appropriation? Is that what you were?
Well, that's, I mean, what is, what is the?
We've already passed for the July twelfth, so this would be for the work session. I would have to have paperwork for the work session by July sixth.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Julie, you've been doing a great job running the meeting. I kind of feel like you could just sit there.
Not trying to take your thing over.
No, I mean this and I mean this genuinely.
You're very good at sarcasm, if that was.
No, no, seriously. I, I appreciate it. So, yes.
Hand raised?
Yes. I moved my hand just so it could be all three shots. I'm getting good at this. What, you know, one of the things, I think Jeff mentioned it earlier, I think, it doesn't matter, AIC meeting we had, they were really clear, like, like, take your time on this, really look at it. And, and one of the things I wanted to highlight is this, this ARPA dashboard that we've been maintaining that details what we already allocate. I think Jeff, you've been updating it and Michelle, I think you've been updating it too. That's really helpful that we can put some of these estimates in and determine like, so we received a total of twenty eight point eight million dollars. How close are we to that number right now?
We're how oversubscribed.
How oversubscribed are we? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I, and I think that's, that's one, I mean, as, as hard as it will be for something like, and that's why I'm thinking, maybe we do the windows and the fire panel now for convention center because you have that pot of money, you want to be able to balance things out together instead of just piecemealing it, right? And that was one of the things that we all talked about was the importance of trying to figure out how to balance those allocations out. And if you don't have the full picture, you know, there are some things obviously we had to do, but if we don't have as much of the full picture as possible right now, you know, maybe we, we wait and, and think about that balance. Think about how are we balancing social service, investment in the future, who are we helping and those kinds of questions?
And, and I think we want to be careful too, if I may, that, that the projects that aren't as flushed out or we're hitting roadblocks like transit, we're not losing the funding for that because these other projects are more fully fleshed out at an earlier timetable.
Yeah.
So just need to be.
It's a good point.
And that, that is a fair point.
Yeah.
But also I don't think that, we also don't want to make, we want to make sure that projects that are kind of, like I said, kind of boring and nuts and bolts, don't necessarily lose out things that sound good.
Yeah, I see this survey as more of a guide and same thing with the conversation with the public, because they are going to come up with new ideas that we haven't thought of. But, but it certainly isn't going to be everything that we use to make a decision, I would assume. And because we do have other obligations, I'm not sure, you know, putting solar throughout the county is something that a lot of people are going to embrace necessarily, but I see it as super important and a huge. But I see it as super important and, and a huge, and a huge leap for us.
One, one of the things I, I add is ever since the pandemic started, I always, every meeting that starts, I look at the. Corner of a screen at the, the daytime calendar. It's just this habit I've gotten into. And one of the things that occurs to me since the pandemic has started, things have changed, circumstances have changed. We're now in that post period. Where the economy is changing very much. I mean, we're, you know, we've got people talking about gas prices, people talking about. Retirement accounts, inflation, et cetera. And one of the things I like about these dollars is going to twenty twenty-six. You have some wiggle room as things change because things do, things do change and our community changes, the need changes. And it happens really quickly and, and I'm, I'm always struck by how much changes in a year's time.
Yeah.
Here we've got something that we're, what, two years, three months into and we're still into it.
Yeah.
We're frankly into it.
Yeah.
So something to keep in mind as we kind of move forward.
I think that's an excellent point and I wonder if we shouldn't all think about a dollar amount to set aside and say, you know. Let's see what we need next year. Let's do something this year and see what we need next year. And, and do another round next year. I mean, that might be an effective way to manage that as well. And I think, you know, I think we always have, we will always have those things that can be done. That, you know, we can find, maybe we could find another funding source for part of it or perhaps, you know, we can postpone it a year. And it will still be just as effective or nearly as effective as doing it now and. And there are always those things, for example, the highway list of, of things to do that we just, you know, we could, you know. Hey, we've got two hundred thousand dollars left. Let's get this last highway project done, for example. So I think we can have a, a set of these. Projects that can be added to as time gets short. If we set aside money for a fund for, you know. Rural housing and then we find out that there's, you know, a hundred thousand dollars left. We should know where we're going to allocate that at the end of the timeframe, so.
Cheryl has her hand up.
Yes, I would like to urge us to develop the, the public discussion. And input as early as possible. And make, start the planning for that in the very near future.
Could, could council work with Michelle and come up with some potential dates? And then we can look at those dates and. And find a date that works so we could just do a Zoom meeting here and have the public come in, maybe? And then I'll, I'll keep working with T S D on the, on the survey. Of course, things are changing at T S D, so I might have asked a bad question at a bad week, but. I'm good at that. By the way. Of course you are.
So Michelle is sensitive to the upcoming budget session, so.
Yeah.
I want to, I want to get this, get this going.
And that's one of the questions I have about timetable. What are we thinking? You know, just generally, big picture, what are we thinking? And, you know, you all, we, we have our, you know, weekly stuff that we deal with, but you all have budgets coming up and. You know, yeah.
Yeah, so that, that's my question. So how soon do you want to get a public meeting together for this? So that I can, you know, see what kind of dates we've got. I mean, within the next month or two, you know. Are we going to wait? I mean, I would prefer not to do it September because that's when we do our budget sessions, but.
So the budget work sessions are going to be August or September? September?
They're September.
Okay.
So October.
End of October, but yeah, okay. So if. Do you all think we could? Get a public meeting, get the survey done, work through some of the, the kinks and get some more specific ideas on some of these projects? And maybe do something before budget session starts even? It's a couple of months.
But after maybe school starts to let people come back from the summer vacations that they've been doing?
When, when does school start?
They should know.
August third.
There'll be a bell that rings.
So sometime in mid.
So I was going to say, what, like mid-August or?
Yeah.
There's actually one, two, three, four. Mid-August or the, the week of the twenties is, you know, probably. Cause it looks like we're going to have like five Tuesdays.
Okay.
So do we want to try for like a Tuesday, you know, or just any day that's available?
Yeah, I think Tuesdays are bad because Plan Commission and then your meetings. And then if we wait till the very end of August, that's certainly. Not ideal, I think, because of your budget sessions. So if, if we could do, you know, typically. Mondays and some Wednesdays are good at night and I know Thursdays are sometimes good as well, so.
And are we planning for like a, during the day or in the evening?
I would say evening would be better, early evening, if we can get people, you all agree? More, more folks here. Yeah, and then meantime, we'll, we'll try to get our web survey out as soon as we can and get that rolling anyway. And we can at least get some input there. And if there's something new that comes up there. We can certainly do some investigation and see where we're at, but I think we need to think about if we want to leave money aside. For next year, if we want to, how much of this we want to spend now? How are we going to balance everything out? And I think for some of these things, we just need to come up with very specific proposals. Like have a talk with some township trustees. Would you be willing to? Administer this fund and, and talk through some of that, so. Anything else? So I'm going to post this on, I'm going to add the category about. I know we talked a lot about who benefits and I just, it's hard because some of these are really, everybody benefits. But, but I'm going to add this to the Dropbox as a PowerPoint and I think it would be easier just to work off of this at this point. Because, yeah, if, if we just work off of one document, it would be easier for presentation purposes, so. If you all don't mind, I would ask that.
Are you saying that we are no longer going to be using the Excel document that we'll be using?
I mean, I'll check it and see if anything's been added and I can add it to the PowerPoints, but it's just, it seems good to be ready to, sorry.
That hurts my spia soul.
Sorry. It's just, it's hard to present an Excel at a meeting like this and. Yeah, so I moved everything over and did my best. I know, I'm sorry.
It's, it's okay. We'll forgive you this one time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're good?
Y'all appreciate it. And I'll be in touch with my teammates.
We no longer have a quorum.
Okay, we'll take a, a brief break then.
All right.
We now have a quorum back in.
Great. Okay, so we're back on track and we are ready to start item nine. With our correctional officer bargaining unit. And I am unsure as to who exactly is in the room there, so if you could help me out with, with that. I know there's a presentation.
Come on in. Sure, absolutely. Come on up. Welcome. Thanks for waiting.
Gentlemen, make sure you use the microphone so that we can pick up everybody's voice, okay? Thank you. That it won't stretch.
Push the red button.
Yep. All right. First off, on behalf of the correctional officers here and everybody else at the jail, we thank you guys for taking the time to meet with us. It does mean a lot for us. In fact, you guys actually reached out to us. That shows you guys support us and that you want to be part of the solution to the problem we're currently facing. So imagine you work your scheduled shift, you go home to spend time with your family, receive a phone call calling you back to work. Someone's called in sick and you're short-staffed. You could be fishing with your kids, celebrating an anniversary with your wife, your husband. Or you could be asleep in the middle of the night. It doesn't matter. Work calls, you're needed. You're then telling your kids, I'm sorry, I'll make it up to you next time. You're telling your spouse, we'll celebrate the anniversary tomorrow. You tell yourself you'll make up the sleep at a different time as you drink an energy drink. Now imagine not only working those extra shifts and working on your days off, but that your request for vacations denied due to the lack of staff. Sorry, kids, we'll take you to Disney World next year, I promise. Finally, imagine in all that environment that's constantly negative, where there's people that hate you, they've harmed you given the chance. And add insult to injury, there's a small but very vocal part of the population that also makes them know that they don't support you. That's the reality of what my coworkers and I deal with every day and it's becoming an emergency. We're being overworked, we're exhausted, many officers are experiencing burnout. Some officers are working multiple sixteen-hour shifts. Some officers are calling in sick, order just to get a day off so they can recharge. What happens when that happens? Then we have to call somebody else in for overtime, so then we're stuck in that cycle. We already work weekends and holidays, we accept that. We know that's part of the job we sign on. But now we're faced with constant overtime and time tonight off. We aren't just guards that keep the inmates in, we're oftentimes mental health counselors when an inmate has a mental health crisis. According to the American Psychological Association, sixty-four percent of the inmates have some sort of mental illness. The National Institute of Drug Abuse states that eighty-five percent of the inmates have a substance use disorder. We're the ones watching them go through painful withdrawals, the ones that have to be diligent and make sure deadly drugs such as fentanyl doesn't make its way into the jail. Many times, we're the ones taking the phone calls from inmates loved ones who just want to make sure that they're okay. We're the first responders that respond to an inmate having a seizure, oftentimes due to a drug withdrawal, to the inmate who's having a diabetic episode. To the inmate who's just attempted to commit suicide by cutting themselves multiple times with a razor blade. We're the ones performing CPR on the inmate who's not breathing and saving his life while we wait for the medical personnel to arrive. Finally, we're the essential workers who worked every day through the height of the pandemic. When other agencies and businesses had their employees working from home, we were in the trenches. Close quarters daily with high-risk individuals. I don't have the exact numbers, but I can say the confidence that almost every officer's tested positive for COVID at least once. I can say with everybody that's here with me today, everybody's tested positive at least once, at least two twice. When the bomb threat was called into the Justice Building recently, we're the ones still inside doing our jobs to the best of our ability. Going home isn't a luxury that we get when there's potential crisis or threat. As of the last payroll, there's been over two thousand three hundred and forty-eight hours of overtime in two thousand twenty-two for seventy-three thousand eight hundred and nineteen dollars. So what impact is all that overtime and lack of days off having on the officers? For one, it's causing constant fatigue. Officers coming to work completely exhausted is a security risk. Puts the officers and inmates both at risk because one small mistake can mean a life or death situation. As I mentioned, it is resulting in burnout. That in turn is causing officers to leave. If an officer can find a job that pays close to or even make more than what they have now, without having to deal with the stress that this job brings. And they can take a family vacation without fear of it being denied, why wouldn't they consider that? A two thousand ten report from the CDC states that thirty-six percent of correctional officers have PTSD, thirty-two percent have depression. They have a thirty-nine percent higher suicide rate than the general population, a twenty percent higher divorce rate. And heart disease at fifty percent rate higher than any other occupation. And that's a twelve-year-old report. Add the pandemic, the possible long-term health effects from COVID that we still don't know all about. And the added stress of not having days off into this, I'd say it's safe to assume those numbers would be even higher. When Colonel Crowe addressed the council on April twenty-sixth, he stated we were currently down eight officers. As of today, we're down nine, one more leaving this week, three more leaving this summer. And at least two that are just waiting to hear back from the interviews that they've had. Since January of twenty-one, we've lost twenty-three officers. Many of them have more than five years of experience. Many of them stated their reason for leaving was either not enough pay or inability to take time off. I've heard people say that everybody's replaceable. As a body, yes, that's true. We are replaceable. However, the experience you're losing is not. Trading out veteran officers with five-plus years of experience for a new hire. Doesn't only cost the county more money in constantly training new hires, but it's a security risk. The lack of experience puts themselves and other officers at risk due to not having the knowledge of veteran officer. It's imperative that almost more than anything, we need to retain the officers that we currently have. So what can the council do to help us combat that issue? There's three immediate things we feel the council can do to help at this time. One, offer a sign-on bonus to make the job more attractive to new hires. With the current job market and the view that some people have of law enforcement, we aren't getting many applications. When we met with Ms. Crossley, Ms. Munson and Mr. Cockrell, Mr. Cockrell mentioned that the government's usually behind the private sector when it comes to adapting and catching up to the times. But it doesn't have to be that way. We have the ability to lead. Two, offer retention bonus to the officers who have stayed. Show them the hard work and sacrifice they've put in is appreciated. Ms. Munson, in our last meeting, it could possibly be a good use for the ARPA funds. I know you guys have spent a lot of time talking about those. But I think if anybody in the county would meet the criteria and qualify for assistance from the ARPA funds, it's the hard-working coworkers at the jail. The third thing the council can do is raise the wages. As I mentioned, officers are leaving for jobs that pay close to or more than what they make now. Not having to deal with the stress and danger that we do. In a world where places like Target are now starting off between fifteen and twenty-four dollars an hour. Cowalant starting workers are higher wages than us. We have to make ourselves more attractive. Morgan County currently has a starting wage that's approximately a dollar more an hour than what we make. In the past, Morgan County is one of those places that we've lost officers to. According to an NPR article out of Wisconsin from December twenty-one, Racing County, Wisconsin turned to their ARPA funds to address staffing shortages. The county board approved using seven million dollars in ARPA funds over the next several years to raise wages. Including an average pay increase of seven fifty an hour to twenty-eight ninety-six for correctional officers. Racing County Executive Jonathan Delagrave said the results were immediate and that they were able to fill positions with experienced correctional officers. In fairness, Racing County does have approximately forty-nine thousand more residents than Monroe County and their jail is about twice the size. So while Monroe County may not be able to duplicate Racing County, I believe it shows we can and should use those ARPA funds to make a difference. We have fifty-three full-time officers, including captains, and the four people we're set to lose by the end of summer. Of those fifty-three, twenty-six live outside of Monroe County, half, half our jail population. As gas prices and inflation continue to rise, how long before those individuals take a job closer to home? Even if it pays a little less in order to combat those rising prices? We're in an emergency situation at the jail. We're urging the council to show the Monroe County is leading the way before our situation gets even worse. More people leave and someone gets seriously hurt due to the lack of staff. Thank you.
Thank you for your, your words on this issue. And I'm gonna see if any of my colleagues have questions or comments for the officers. Mr. McKim?
Thanks. Thank you very much for your presentation. Actually, I'm not, I have a question both for you all and also for our staff. But I guess the, the question for you, and you may not know this, but how long have the? So, okay, so we have about, about between nine and ten vacancies right now, right? How does that compare to typical? You know, what is, what does the graph look like?
We struggle keeping fully staffed the eight years that I've been there. But it's usually been a thing where there's kind of a revolving door for certain people. We've got enough applicants coming in to where we can continuously fill those spots. At one point, we were completely staffed and we had part-time employees waiting for full-time spots to open. The problem we have now is not only are we losing those people, we're not getting the, the applications in to replace the ones that we're losing. So I would say it's, it's probably been about a year since we've been to where we felt close to fully staffed.
Okay, and then typically, do you know how long these full-time positions stay vacant?
It depends. I don't believe we fill a full-time position in several months now. Like I said, in the past, you would, if you had part-time people. You'd put them through the FTO program and as soon as we felt they were ready, if there was an open spot for full-time, they'd move into it. And even if they were full-time, or excuse me, part-time for a couple of months, as soon as a full-time spot opened up, they would move into it. But right now, the only part-time person we have is somebody that's been there longer than I have. They're, they're not interested in going full-time. So we don't even have the part-time people to move into a full-time position.
Thank you. And then I guess my question is probably from Ms. Turner King. What? Go over the, the, the collective bargaining process briefly for us. I mean, this isn't usually something that starts with the council, is it?
So typically, the collective bargaining unit meets with Mr. Cockrell. They express. What they would like to see in the contract upcoming, Mr. Cockrell. Mr. Cockrell then takes that to the commissioners, they kind of negotiate back and forth like that, and then it would come to council.
Okay, thank you. And so has any communication gone on with the commissioners yet, with the collective bargaining?
And I can answer it, Mr. Wilson came. Myself and Ms. Purdy had a meeting with the collective bargaining unit, and I think that is and the things discussed in that meeting would convey to the commissioners, but other than that, I don't believe so.
Okay, thank you.
Are there other questions from council? Yes, Mr. Iverson.
So, given what we just discussed with the collective bargaining happening, going currently, I really appreciated you bringing three items to us. That's really helpful. A lot of times when people come to us, they say, here's our issue, fix it. I was just like, oh, okay. So it's really helpful to have you all bring three items. And the first two, the sign-on bonus and the retention bonus, do you have a good idea of what other communities are doing? Because you had mentioned that there's not only wage inflation happening from the private sector, but it's also happening from neighboring communities. So do we have a good sense of what's going on?
Some. I know other agencies are offering a sign-on bonus. I'm not sure what they're doing as far as retention bonus. The main reason we mentioned the retention bonus is, one, the number of people we're losing. Two, if we start giving sign-on bonuses to new people coming in, it's not fair. People that have spent their time here, that's gonna make them want to leave. They're not gonna be happy for that. But I can't speak as far as what other agencies are doing as far as retaining their employees.
Well, thank you. And again, I mean this sincerely, I really appreciate you bringing a well-thought-out presentation to us. We don't always get that, so thank you.
And Councilmember Iverson, I did contact Morgan County, Johnson, and Hamilton. And during my communications with those counties, they indicated they do not do signing bonuses, and most of them in regards to retention offer longevity. The way the jail's longevity is currently calculated is that they get forty-eight cents on the hour for every twenty years that they've been in service. So the jail's longevity is calculated differently than any other county employee in the sense that it goes to their hourly rate and they get per from that longevity.
Sure. It just goes to show this is a very complicated issue, and I'm really glad we're talking about it.
I had a, pardon me, not, not, thank you very much, by the way, and thanks for waiting as we went through the agenda. I had a clarification question, and maybe council's person to tell. The current contract is a year old, is that right?
The current contract would be in place until two thousand twenty-four, so we're in between bargaining years.
I'm just trying to remember when we did. I think, yeah, so, okay, that, thank you. That's my clarification question that I had.
Oh, so again, thank y'all for, and the rest of the staff that are here that aren't being able to be seen on camera. Thank you again for your meeting that you had with Councilman Munson and I. And thank you again for coming out and speaking your truth. As you just mentioned that with morale and all of those things that are being down, I just wanted to take the time to say thank you for that because you're here and you could be spending time elsewhere with family. I know you have a little one that's on the way and you should be preparing for that. But you have taken the time to do that, so I definitely just want to say thank y'all for coming out and doing that. It's hard, it's tough, and with everything that's going on, of course, with COVID and the big resignation that everybody else is feeling, this is an important component to our justice system that lets us know again why we need to, you know, have more talks in facilities or about, you know, having a new facility because maybe if we had something like this, we wouldn't have this particular problem, maybe just putting that out there. And that's a whole nother way of me going down that road, but I'm not gonna go there because you are here with me. Just a clarification, since you, I was trying to go down the numbers. So you said since we met, which was a few weeks ago, approximately how many people have left again?
My numbers were since Colonel Crowe met with the council on the twenty-sixth of April. We were eight people down at that point. We're now down nine with three more leaving this summer, one leaving this week, and at least two waiting on job offers from some other place.
Okay, and then, I know you've given us.
Crossley, sorry to interrupt. I spoke to Colonel Crowe on the twenty-fourth, and at that, on that date, he told me there was ten vacancies. He hired one person and another person was preparing to take the application test. He also said, though, that on the same day that he hired someone and someone was taking the test, someone advised that they were retiring and another person left.
Okay, thank you. And I know you've given all the reasons why people are, why you are short-staffed in the morale and not being able to, you know, spend time with family and all of those things. It's been hard to sit here to listen to that, but I also think it's been necessary for us to listen to it as well. But I think I asked this before, but I just wanted to ask it again out in public. You mentioned all the things as to, you know, why people are leaving. In particular, I think it'd be a good question to ask, you know, why you are so dedicated that you continue to stay.
I think I can speak for the majority of us. For the most part, we enjoy our job. For me personally, I want to try to make a difference in somebody's life. I understand the recidivism rate's very high, but if I can touch one person and let them know they don't have to continue down that path, then I feel like I've succeeded. And I think a lot of these guys are the same way. We legit care about the community. Yes, half of us live outside of Monroe County, but we're still in Wilmington all the time, and the other half are right here living in the community. So they want to make that difference. They want to have a safe civil community to where they're not worried about their family members if they go to Walmart and things of that nature.
Thank you.
So do you have a sense of how much of a signing and/or retention bonus would even make a difference? You know, what would it take to make a difference?
You know, that's not something we've really discussed too much with the officers. You know, some officers give us one number and other officers give us an extremely different number. I think it's one of those things, we just want to meet with the council, kind of get your guys' feedback, and then go to our guys and say, here's what they're willing to do. What do you guys think of this? And see what we can come together. As far as a specific number, I wouldn't feel comfortable giving one out at this point.
Okay, thank you.
I had a question. I don't, I can't see everybody at this point, but I'm wondering, have you talked about or considered changing the way in which your shifts are structured, specifically the length of shifts? And I know you have some overlap. And are those factors in your job satisfaction, I guess?
We've looked into possibly changing the schedule, going from our current shifts to twelve-hour shifts or even ten-hour shifts. The problem is, with the short staffed as we are, it really doesn't make a difference. If we go to twelve-hour shifts, we're still basically at our minimum. You're still looking at people not having their days off. The latest thing that we looked at was based on Morgan County. Morgan County does ten-hour shifts where they work the same four days and then they're off the same three. I think we can make that possibly work schedule-wise, but the problem you're gonna have with that is if somebody gets forced to work Friday, Saturday, Sunday, every single week, I think we lose people there. Because right now, yes, we work weekends, but it rotates, we get that time off. Plus, any kind of schedule change does have to be approved by the sheriff, and I'm not sure that he's willing to approve a schedule change at this point.
Sure. Councilman Munson.
Thank you correctional officers for meeting with the full council, and it was as difficult to hear the first time and the second time. And as the second time. I think, I think we are all challenged and trying hard to identify paths that would be productive to consider. But I want to advise, as I did at our meeting, first meeting, that this is not a good, an opportune time to talk about finances or other issues. This has to be done in the collective bargaining framework, and that's already set up and has been working very well, both for officers and for county government. So we ask your patience in considering financial issues, but we do very much appreciate hearing the issues that you have told us about tonight. And we do want to hear your ideas on possible solutions. I will just encourage you to conduct this in the framework of collective bargaining meeting, even if it's outside the normal schedule for contract renewals. Thanks again.
Thank you.
And I appreciate Councilman Munson's comments. I definitely appreciate your being here and talking to us about the struggles that you're obviously having. And I would encourage you to work with your administrative leadership in the jail and the sheriff's office, and then also talk to our commissioners. They are the appropriate body for making decisions based on, you know, that affect your contract and that that, you know, we then can ratify and make, or not ratify, but then appropriate funds to support. But I think that this has made, this has been really, really helpful for us and enlightening to hear from you. And I have been told that Mr. Deckard has a statement. Sorry.
I do have a remark. Hopefully, it's not too much of a statement. First of all, I also want to, I know I asked a technical question. Usually, I'm the one that's real chatty, and I try to eliminate that. I want to just make the remark that you being here and the comments that you make aren't lost on me in any of this. When I first came on council in two thousand nineteen and met with county employees about various issues, the biggest thing I wanted was a wand to fix every issue for county employees and any perceived issue that they had. And I come from that, real honestly, son of a court reporter. So I understood what decisions in rooms like this did to at-home families and otherwise. There is a huge, what I have learned in that time is there is a big process to all of this. And sometimes that process can be frustrating, but with the county and so many different departments and so many different needs and so many different things that happen, that process, whether it's collective bargaining or not, we have some folks working with the county that are not in those units, make sure that that process is as fair as possible so that down the road, it's, conversely, you're not inappropriately affected. Now, does that mean it's always easy, great, or perfectly balanced? We had a WIS study that's supposed to take care of a lot of that, and I'll just be honest, it doesn't always capture all that. But my bottom line to you all is, I want you to know that you have a lot of grateful and sympathetic ears here to this. This is not lost on us. We may not say much at this point with this, but it's a larger part of things. And so I'm grateful for your words very much, and I just want to thank you. I didn't want my technical question to make that sound like I'm not, because I want you to know that for sure. All of you that are here that are taking time, and congratulations to you on that family. That's ultimately how we get you right by the families of this community and your own. That's what we're trying to get to. Just, there's a process to do it. That's all I had to say. That was my remark.
That qualifies as a statement.
I tried not to.
Remark, statement, as always, better said than I typically can. Does anyone else have a question or comment? I didn't want to cut anyone else off. Okay, again, thank you. This is hard for me to do via Zoom. I wish I were in the room with you. I think that would make a better connection. But I do appreciate you taking the time, and we will definitely be glad to hear from you in the future.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, we are on to item ten, which is, whoops, council comment. And do any counselors have a comment to make, Councilor Iverson?
Yes, council, tonight, my council comment is one of vanity. I'd like to inform the council that I recently purchased a new suit, and it looks very nice on me. However, the picture on the county council website doesn't have my new suit, it has my old suit. And I just, you know, I was thinking, it might be time for a new picture on the county council website.
Absolutely.
And I was hoping that we could work with maybe Michelle and schedule that picture sooner rather than later because, you know, I may not fit in my new suit too much longer.
On that plane, I have a question. Does the council want to do a group picture to post on the website? Or would you like to do individual pictures with each council member's, you know, information as well? I personally would like to move toward an individual picture, but I know some people, you know, like to have the group shot, but we'll do whatever you guys want to do.
Does anyone have strong feelings, Mr. Deckard?
I have thoughts and not a statement. What I would say is, I kind of like have a both, and here's what I'll offer. Perhaps we can get to a time where we would have individual profile pictures, but I do think that there is something historical about the setting of the annual or each term start or whatever, pictures that later on in time, people like to go back, take a look at that, remember the time and see the faces. I think there's something to putting that context to history. So I think if we could do both and get this done, I also like things that take things off Michelle's plate and get them, you make them easier and quicker, and if that would help, we could do that.
Cheryl, do you have a comment?
Yes, I too favor both the group picture and individual pictures and member information, but I want to put a priority on the group picture. And certainly, we can kick down the road the individual pictures until Michelle has more time on her plight. And there's a main reason for the group picture to be changed. I didn't know about Counselor Iverson's suit, but I know very well, as do all of you, that Counselor Crossley is not shown in the picture that is our council picture, and we do need to correct that as soon as we can.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Counselor Munson, for saying that because I've been looking at that, and I know I feel official with my counselors here, but it doesn't feel very official when you look on the website and see that, you know, I'm still not there. I know that I'm there, but yeah, and I've had several people and constituents reach out and go, are you really there? What? So I'm here and I'm doing the work, and I would love to be there, but, I mean, for vanity reasons, whatever the case, I think it's just a professional thing just to have it there.
To have our website be accurate. And so.
I'll reach out to Kip May. He's the one that's done our pictures before and set up a time before. and set up a time before the council meeting, if possible. And if not, you know, that way we can get everybody together, so.
Well, are, is this not something we could possibly just do in-house? I mean, I know Kip does a fantastic job, and I know Counselor Hawk has also been concerned about the money in the past and has not participated for that reason. And I think if we want everybody, is there a compromise? I mean...
I, I have a nice camera if, you know, if somebody, if we want to go in that direction, I don't care. We can try it.
I had no idea that Marty had a problem with this.
I don't want to speak for her. She's not here now, but I seem to remember that was an issue.
Okay.
She has mentioned in the past that she, you know, doesn't like be, you know, spending that kind of money on just a one photo.
I don't know. Okay.
And I am gonna have to leave, which is gonna deny you quorum. So if somebody has something urgent to say on the record, please say it now, otherwise.
Definitely say that real quick. I'm sorry, I have to say it because it is the biggest thing that everybody keeps talking about. And in a sea full of my counselor fellows that are here, and me being a woman, I just have to say, there's a great Audre Lorde quote that says, "When we speak, we are afraid our words will not be heard nor welcomed. But when we are silent, we are still afraid, so it is better to speak." It is no surprise that it is probably on everybody's brain what has happened with our Supreme Court. I would be definitely remiss, and I, as the great Tom Petty says, will not back down. And I refuse to. And I know that our General Assembly is coming back in session yet again for a special session. Instead of talking about gas tax, instead of talking about things that are impacting Hoosiers that can also affect those that are here in Monroe County, women's autonomy is yet again becoming in question. And we are in true fear of our county, those that are in underserved parts of our county. Some of our black, brown women in our county could definitely be affected by that. And I have a lot more to say on that, and that can wait until our regular session. But I just want to say that we should all be calling our state legislators to say what the heck it is that they're doing because what is happening is absolutely ridiculous and extreme. I know sometimes people think that, you know, our role on county council is to talk about, you know, budgets and things like that. But this is also something that affects us as well and can affect budget. So I just wanted to say that because it's been sitting on my heart since I've been sitting here on Friday. So that's all I have to say about that, and I'm done.
Thank you. Are there any other urgent messages? Okay, I think that Counselor Crossley summed up what I know I'm feeling and others of you as well. So thank you for your eloquent words, and we will, at this point, be adjourned.